Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. This meeting of the town of Berlin, Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The town of Berlin will be use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel. Approve minutes will be posted on mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 6:36, we do have need for an executive session. The board will enter executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, Police Chief Contract Negotiations and Strategy, and will return to open session thereafter to further conduct its regular business meeting. Do I guess we need to take a vote? Keith?
I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Okay.
Through the chair, I'm going to ask that the board go into executive session, talk about contract revisions, and then call in chief, what time? I'm sorry, what time are we gonna, we're gonna just do like 15, 20 minutes or so, and then chief will call you in? How's that?
Okay, yeah, and there's a waiting room, right? So if I go in, you'll just pull me in when necessary? Perfect.
Make yourself comfortable in the waiting room.
And do we have, did you send us the link for the executive session, Mary?
Yep.
You did?
There's one email with the link to all the sessions for tonight.
All right. All righty. I'm leaving, and I'll see you in executive session.
Okay, see you, bye.
So we've just returned. We're returning to open session from executive session. I would like to reaffirm our vote that we took in executive session, which was to ratify the police chief's contract. And do I hear a motion to ratify the contract?
I moved to, am I moving to ratify the contract or moving to ratify the action in executive session?
Ratify the theme, the action in executive session, and just to be clear, the contract is effective July 1, 2021.
Yes, that's, that's what I move. Sorry.
They still moved.
So moved.
And I will second that. And if there's no comments, questions at this point, we will take a vote. Keith?
Stone, no.
Hawkins, I.
Okay, motion passes. And we're looking forward to another many years.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, as am I.
Okay, and we just have a couple of quick things, and then we'll have-
There is a hand raised, and I don't know if you want to take questions at this time.
Why don't we wait until the public comment period? We just have a couple of things, and then we have the department report from Police Chief Tom Galvin, just to approve the minutes of July 13th, open session. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from our July 13th session.
I will second.
Okay, and there's no comments, questions, changes? All right, then we'll take a vote. Keith?
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Okay, it's unanimous. Margaret, I don't believe we have any correspondence. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And now we're on to general public comment. So is there, there, I don't see any hands raised at this point.
Well, I brought Janet up because her hand was raised earlier.
She is, she is still muted. She's still muted.
I asked her to unmute, and then that's her choice to unmute.
Yeah.
And I'm asking her to start a video. Janet, Janet?
I caught her off- I tried to unmute her, but I couldn't.
Well, because I'm, I'm the host, but I can't.
Okay.
I've asked her. Okay, she may-
Can't unmute her?
I can't force it, she has to agree to it, so, and also start her camera. So I can put her back in the audience if you'd like?
Can she raise a hand from, from-
She must have stepped away from a computer because she's not doing anything on it right now.
Oh, all right. Okay, then I guess we'll put her back into the attendees, and if she raises her hand, later we'll find out what her question is. All right. Okay. Is there any other public comment? All right. Then we're going to move on to the police chief's department report. Oh, wait a minute. Everybody's muted.
Muted again.
Sorry.
All right, well, I got unmuted, then muted, so. All right. So for the month of June, you know, things that we kind of carried forward, everything, everyone was really COVID-related carrying forward from, from May to June. Obviously, at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, I'd issued a directive to the officers to really kind of minimize their interaction with the public. You know, the building, for the most part, was closed, and, you know, we were trying to take reports by telephone and doing a lot of different things. You know, as a result of that, you know, motor vehicle enforcement activity was down. There were some, some activities that were down, but other activities, you know, more security-based with empty businesses and things like that, where obviously we increased. So during this past month, you know, we've had more face-to-face interaction with the public, which is actually kind of nice. You know, granted, the building is still locked down. We had, you know, leading up to this past month, we'd had a few inner, you know, instances where people had to come in the building in order to effectively do what we were doing. But we've actually started to do a lot more, we're doing less reporting by telephone. We started to process new firearms applications again. The process for a new licensed carrier firearms identification card requires that you have fingerprints taken and photographs taken at the, at the police station. So we had not been allowing people in to do that. We've worked out a situation, you know, Sergeant Shartner is the one that does that processing. So we've worked out with him a process to allow people in. We actually allow people in through the cell door into the booking room, not through the whole building. And through that process, he is allowed to, you know, make decisions when he's not comfortable and reschedule people, should there be COVID symptoms or other symptoms that could put him, him at risk. You know, other things that have been suspended through this has been training. That's been one major thing, and as we enter the summer months now is when we really start our next year's in-service training, which is our required training every year. So we don't know what the municipal police training committee is going to do yet, if it's going to be virtual or in person. We fought for years to move it to in-person after they had switched it to online, because we found that in-person was much more effective. So our hope is that in the coming months, they're going to have a way that we can have socially-distanced classes and do things that, that we're able to get offices back in the classroom versus doing things all, all online. So as we moved into, to June and things in the month, we had, you know, over 1,000 calls this month or 1,000 incidents for service, which was up quite a bit from last year, which kind of surprised me that we had only had 600 calls for service this time last year, especially since some of our things and some motor vehicle stops and things with that are down. We did have, you know, again, this was a big increase with nine cases involving criminal charges. We actually had our, our first in custody arrests since the COVID pandemic started. Everything we had done had been through a summons, because we didn't want to bring people in for relatively minor or things that weren't as serious events. We had two house breaks this past month, and both on, on West Street, and we actually were able to arrest the two people that, that committed those. It was, it was a situation that worked out really well. The two breaks occurred at a very specific time period, one afternoon, and one of them was a house that was for sale and nothing was taken. The other was a home very close to the police station, where some jewelry and personal items were taken. Detective Trangone worked very closely with the resident, and she was actually able to identify some of the things that she thought were hers that were for sale online. So, you know, similar kind of what you see sometimes on TV, she and, she and Detective Trangone posed as a couple, and they went out to Holden and met the people that were selling these items. She was able to identify the items as hers, and a combination of other things had occurred in, leading up to that, where another resident had identified some suspicious activity at another house on West Street during that same timeframe that the break-ins occurred. And from that, she was able to give us a very good description of a vehicle and the two people that were involved. And from her description, we actually identified the vehicle and the two people that came to sell the jewelry and other items to Detective Trangone and the victim were identified, and we were able to take them and develop probable cause and take them into custody. So it really worked out very well. It was only a couple of days until the arrests were made. We worked with the Holden Police Department, and we've developed some other information that these people have been involved in several breaks in the Holden area as well. So one of them is still currently being held in, in custody. He was actually, had been released on bail, special bail because of COVID concerns for house breaks in Middlesex County, and, you know, and now has committed other ones while he was on, on release. So things really worked out well, and it doesn't always happen that way, especially with break-ins without video. It makes it very difficult to get this and have eyewitness, you know, identification assistance was, was very helpful. But one thing that it also did point out, when, when people do see something unusual, call us right away. We may be able, hey, been able to intercept those two people early on before they were able to break into the other two homes, you know, had we gotten a call about the suspicious activity initially. You know, the person talked to them and, and questioned them, and they didn't give, they gave some evasive answers, but they didn't call us, and it wasn't until after they heard about the house breaks that they let us know about it. So Peg, I know this one's near and dear to your heart, the CSX work has been completed. I was able to speak to the rail master for our area about the cleanup, which has yet to take place. He explained to me that they have two specific type of vehicles that they use for this, to clean up and to set up for these type of work. And unfortunately, one of the trucks has broken down, and he said it was in need of about $50,000 worth of repair. So they have one, which is doing the setup and not doing the cleanup. So he got word from above him that we're due for a mid-August cleanup, so we'll stay on top of them and, and make sure that those piles and the trash, and not only the trash along the tracks, but those piles at the, at the edges of the roadway are taken care of. You know, it's kind of an eyesore, and, you know, they did a nice job patching and repairing some of our crossings, but only to leave the trash behind is not, not what we're going to see happen. So I'll stay on top of them, and I know Peg is going to stay on top of me, so I stay on top of them, so that we'll make sure that we get that, get that, they follow through with what they've told me.
Tom, is there any way that you can put up police tape or something? And here's why I say that. On Saturday, coming up over the tracks on Jones off of South, there was a man in a purple car, and the only reason that I noticed him, he was in a purple car, the make of the car is called Leaf. He and his son, small son, were walking around the timbers that have the gigantic spikes sticking out of them. So I don't know if they were just like, hey, look at this, this is kind of cool, or what they were trying to do. So again, I'm just concerned that somebody's going to be down there poking around and be like, fall, and then the town, town incur something. So I'm sure as soon as you put the tape up, the tape will be ripped down, but, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just concerned with the safety at this point, where I saw the father and the son strolling around the trash.
I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out tomorrow to my contacts at CSX and see, see if it's something they could do. What would concern me is if we were the ones to mark it, then we would then incur liability should the police tape get taken down or something along those lines. So let me see what I can get them to do before, before we actually take action on our, our own. I think, I just would be concerned that if we took action without speaking to them first, that then we could incur some liability.
All right, I appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah. So one of the other things that June is always known for, for us, is some activities with the school. And obviously, with school not in a traditional session, it took those away. You know, we, we normally have Field Day, and we've inherited kickball kind of as the police department event for Field Day, where we run the event, we have officers that are playing with the kids, and it was really something that was missed this year. It's just the time that we get to do something different with the kids, and actually some of the parents as well that are there to help chaperone. So hopefully, we will get through this pandemic and kids will get back into school so we can be part of that again. You know, also as part of the end of the year, there's a fifth grade graduation ceremony and dare graduation, and that we're always a part of, obviously, that, weren't able to do that in person as they always have. Officer Goulding did do some, some videos for the kids. We were also very fortunate that, working with the fifth grade teachers, he was able to actually still work with the kids every week. He had a Monday appointment with the kids where we actually would set them up downstairs in the training room using the projector, and we'd, we'd project Zoom onto that for him, so it was like all the kids were sitting in front of him up on the large screen with the projector, and then he was running his, his classes with them. So it was good that we were able to keep that interaction. But probably the most disappointing is the police union sponsors the fifth grade trip to George's Island every year, and we spend the day with the kids out in Boston Harbor, and it's, it's really a unique, you know, experience and kind of culmination of their, their time at BMS before they head off to, to Honto. So, you know, again, hope we're going to be able to get back to that. I don't know if there's something that the kids are going to be able to do when they get to Tohoto to try and mirror that, but it's, it's disappointing that they, that they had to miss that. And, you know, we're not unique. It happened to my kids in their schools, the trips that they were supposed to do, they, they had missed. But, you know, it's always been an important part and kind of an end of the year for those kids in fifth grade to be able to do that. So hopefully, we'll be back at it again next year. So one of the last things I wanted to talk about was our staffing. So we're actually doing okay, but several months ago, we had, began a process to fill one of two part-time vacancies, and also knowing that we have a third part-time vacancy that will be coming very soon, as someone ages out and the, the ages that our, you know, officers are allowed to work until. So we had begun that process, unfortunately, due to COVID and knowing that we weren't going to be able to do field training and, and a lot of things weren't going to happen, we suspended it. We had picked a candidate, that candidate is still very interested in the position. So that's something in the next few weeks, as we think we're able to begin the process and begin training someone again that I'll be bringing forward to, to fill one of those vacancies. You know, we're, you know, I made a decision when I presented the budget this year and some changes that we had to make to the budget, that we did eliminate filling some of those positions this year, but, you know, we don't want to be down three, so we do want to fill one of those before our, one of our senior part-time officers does leave in the fall.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay. So what is your take on the school resource officer? Is that going to continue?
I, I think it will definitely continue. One thing that, there's been a lot in the, with the legislation that's been proposed that's talked about school resource officers, and one thing I don't know if our legislators realized as they talked about it was that, you know, we're already mandated to have a memorandum of understanding with the schools for this. So this isn't something that we pushed on the schools, it's something that the schools have always welcomed, and as long as the superintendent will allow us to be part of it, we will absolutely be a part of it. You know, whether it's formal teaching or informal relationships, you know, having that and, and building that trust with the kids and with families, I think is an important part to start. You know, trust and legitimacy are part of what we strive for in policing, and, you know, if we can build that foundation at a young level and make it that kids aren't afraid of the uniform, they see what we're doing and, and understand why we do things, you know, we'll gain some trust as we move forward, that they understand that we're doing things for the right reasons, and, you know, you want a society that, that respects the police because the police respect them, and, you know, we don't, we don't want to be, you know, the enforcer, so, you know, and have that, you know, we want to be more of the guardian. You know, we kind of look at things in our job as the guardian and the warrior mentalities that have to be taken at times based upon the, the call. We want to lean heavily towards the guardian and only turn that worry on in very certain situations. So, you know, we want to make sure that the kids understand that, that families understand that, and, you know, throughout my career, that's been a perfect environment to do that. The number of kids that I worked with through middle school when I was a young police officer that I still am in contact with today and have seen them work into careers, and, you know, I think that's important and important that we continue.
Good, good, glad to hear it. The other question I had was about, we haven't heard about the animal control officer. How are things going?
Things are going well, it's been relatively quiet. I haven't gotten any written reports, so because of COVID, Helen hasn't been going to her daughter's house, and that's where she used her computer, but we've been staying in contact, things have been working well. I know there was a, a commendation or a letter she had gotten from the Nelsons not long ago about working with some foxes, so things are actually really, working out really well right now, and she and I are staying in, in contact often.
So the dogs and cats must be social distancing from everybody, everything?
Dogs, cats, we've had, we've had a bear lately.
Oh, yeah.
So the bear's been around a little bit, the moose had been making a couple of guest appearances, so as long as the donkeys stay in, I'm happy. Jerry's done a good job to shore up the fences.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Chief Galvin? Not tonight. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, and enjoy the rest of your night.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye, Tom.
Right, bye.
Thanks. All right, we're going to move on to the town administrator report. Okay. First of all, I have a correction to the Council on Aging Director's office hours. I had them wrong in last week's report, so I want to clarify that her regular office hours are Tuesday and Thursday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Friday, 1:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. And her offices is on the lower level of the town offices at 23 Linden Street. And while we're on COA, we are going to, we, the Council on Aging Director, co-chair Bob Blair and I are going to be conducting an interview tomorrow for an additional per diem driver, and the existing driver, Jenny Zukatinsky, has expressed her willingness to continue serving as another per diem driver, so this is good. The Council on Aging Director and Fire EMS Chief Clark are finalizing van transportation, van transportation COVID-19 safety protocols, and once they have the protocols in place, we're going to be placing an order for the required supplies, things like face shields and, and other supplies. And a van, part three of three, the AED for the van has been delivered, and van drivers are going to be trained on it as well as CPR and first aid. So we hope to be able to begin the van transportation program with fully qualified and trained drivers. And AED stands-
Oh, I'm sorry, Automated External Defibrillator. It's, it's, it's like a CPR machine.
Just for those who didn't-
I am, I am quite familiar with them.
Good to have handy, huh?
Yes.
Okay, so benefits consulting. So we've, I've extended the deadline for, for the responses to the RFP to August 13th. We have attempted issuing this RFP twice before, and because of COVID, responses have been very slow, and there haven't been many of them. So I, my hope is that by extending the RFP and making sure that it is project-driven to the pri, to the primary functions of assisting with health insurance cost savings for active employees and investigating retiree health insurance benefits that could potentially be funded in part from savings from the active employee health insurance, that we'll be able to get a few, a few proposals in. On July 15th, there was a deadline to submit quotes for structural surveys for the Bullard House. One quote was received, it's for $8,500. The Historical Commission will be meeting, I believe it's tomorrow, to discuss this, and then a placeholder will be added to the board's agenda for the Historical Commission to request spending, request, request spending of those funds. The 64 Banner Road Proposed Marijuana Retail Establishment, C3 Industries, our first host community agreement negotiation session is scheduled for tomorrow, July 21st. Board Chair Chris Keith and I will be participating in those negotiations, and I have, we have invited our town council to join to answer any technical questions C3 Industries might have on the draft agreement. Municipal offices reopening, I'm going to read this, because we have reopened for business transactions by appointment only. So individuals who are wishing to do business with town offices can schedule an appointment in advance by calling or emailing the department they'd like to visit. Visitors are going to be required to wear a mask inside the building, and visitor logs are kept right inside the front lobby in the event contact tracing is needed. So visitors will be asked to sign in in the law, on the log. Any individual who has recently returned from a state with COVID-19 spiking cases must first quarantine for the requisite 14 days in Massachusetts. I already read that. The River Bridge Development Agreement, the invoice for the first of five annual $100,000 public safety mitigate mitigation payments will actually be issued this week. We had planned last week, but it's going to be issued with an invoice, and there will be plenty of advance notice for the payment, as payment is due on November 1st of each Last week, we had consultants attend the monthly department heads meeting to give an overview of the ADA Self-Assessment and Transition Plan. That plan and the executive summary that goes with it has been posted on the town website. Folks can take a look at that. That plan is going to be important not only to make improvements for ADA accessibility, but also for grants through other state agencies that will take into account the fact that the town has adopted a plan, and so there will be, well, what we might call bonus points in other grant applications because we have this plan. So finally, tonight, I just want to, I want to give a shout out to residents. I want to ask them to help us help them. I want, I want them to help us help residents. So if any residents observe activity, they, that, you know, any kind of activity in a road or in any public way that may not be compliant with town bylaws, regulations, or policies, please contact us and bring it to our attention so that we can address those issues in a timely manner. You know, we can inform residents whether or not an activity is compliant, and if it's not compliant, we can follow up. So that's it. That is it for tonight.
We do not have any old business tonight. So under new business, we have to approve the Crystal Club Charity Golf Event at the Berlin Country Club.
We have new information on this as well.
We have information?
We have new information on this that we received late, late this afternoon.
Oh, all right.
So this is an event that's, an annual event, it's planned to be held on August 8th at Berlin Country Club. Mary reached out to all our local reviewers and got their comments. Clearly, this year, the big issue is COVID-19 and compliance with COVID-19 safety protocols. So on the sheet that the board had in its agenda packet, we have received the local reviews, but if the board does agree to approve this, there is going to, they are going to need to satisfy all Board of Health concerns. We received a late piece of- piece of information this morning, our confirmation from the Chair of the Board of Health that reads, as per state and Neshoba Associated Boards of Health, 100 people total, including golfers and workers, can be present at one time, portable toilets through Neshoba Associated Boards of Health licensed hauler, hand wash stations, sanitizers, and signage with COVID-19 protocols and guidance must be in place for this particular tournament. So when we follow up with them to give the board's approval, the board's approval should be conditioned on all of those things being in place, and the organizers should follow up with our local Board of Health on all of those regulations. Additionally, the building commissioner had a question. Well, he actually had a comment about the size or square footage of the tent. If it is over than seven, if it is over 700 square feet, they will need to obtain a permit and inspection prior to the event. The permission that the board grants tonight or the approvals that the board grants tonight would only be applicable to the Berlin side of the country club. And we would provide notice to Bolton's Town Administrator regarding conditional approvals that are issued by this board. So I just wanted to give you all the latest updates on this one. Otherwise, they've met their, they've met the requirements. Interesting time to be having a tournament.
All right, do we want to have, do we need to have two votes or one for the all alcohol license? And this is a event permit?
Yep. I don't know what the board typically does. If you separate the two, I wouldn't be opposed to having one motion that authorizes both with the conditions applicable to both parts of the vote, both parts of the motion. The alcohol license and the special event.
OK, then how about if I'll make it easy for both Scott and Peg, and I'll say, so moved.
Mary, you got all that?
Do I hear, do I hear a second?
I can second unless Peg wants to.
No, go ahead, Scott. It's fine.
OK. Any, any other questions? Comments? All right, then we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
OK, motion passes. Next, we have to vote approval of the food pantry reopening plan for the basement that is located in the basement of the town offices, and they're proposing to start as of August 1. Did you have anything else to add, Margaret?
These protocols are largely in line with the protocols that we've put in place for the town offices, so they're doing everything safely. There were a couple of things in this procedure. Fran has asked that Board of Health, Chief Galvin and I give, give feedback and suggestions, so I just have a few for them. First of all, I would like to, the town to be notified when they would revert to parking in the front lot, because if we still have COVID-19 protocols coming through the front door of this building, we'd at least want to know what their plan is as far as doing that. My only other suggestion on this was that visitors to the food pantry should use hand sanitizer before they touch anything in the food pantry and always wash their hands immediately after handling bags. That's just something that I would suggest they add to the protocols because they will be handling things in the pantry. That's all I have.
OK, and you pass this on to? OK.
Yes.
All right, any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the food pantry reopening scheduled as of August 1, 2020.
OK.
I will second.
OK. And if there's no other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
And that's unanimous. So this is, the next thing on the agenda is to vote to authorize issuance of personal property tax bills in lieu of a payment in lieu of taxes. This is for the solar array located at 344 Randall Road. Go ahead, Margaret.
OK, so I've put a recommendation in the board's packet for tonight that essentially says I recommend that the board vote that the tax issues shall be resolved through issuance of personal property tax bills for the project's assets based on the valuations determined by the the town's assessors. And we've, we've discussed this for the past several weeks. I have sent an email to the project developers, again, with no response. They have been completely non-responsive. I think it's in the town's best interest that we actually capture these assets as personal property and bill for them.
OK. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we issue tax bills in for personal property taxes for the project's assets determined by the town assessor.
I will second.
OK. And if there's no comments or questions, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
OK, thank you very much. It's unanimous.
I will forward that to the assessors.
OK, thank you. The next thing on our agenda was to vote to schedule a board goal-setting retreat. So, you know, you both read the information that Margaret put in the Google Drive about the, the goal-setting. Peg, you brought this up, and I wondered if this was what you were, had in mind.
I mean, it is. This is something that we tried with the previous board, really didn't gain all that much traction as I look around at other towns' websites and what their selectmen, select board, depending on what you call them, they have them all over the place. They have, you know, select people taking, you know, taking each one, taking two, driving it through to fruition, getting the information out to the public. I think that we owe it to the town to show them what we're working on besides normal, everyday stuff, you know, just to try and push things through the town. So, no, it's very much in line with what Margaret had sent out.
OK. And because I wasn't sure whether it would be goal-setting for just things that just the selectmen do, or whether it's goal-setting for the priorities that Margaret has, or both, or?
Well, I mean, when I looked at it, you know, and I started to put some thoughts together, you know, with that, some of the ones that I came up with, which, again, was kicking around, you know, like a volunteer guide. Granted, you know, we don't want to have total oversight, some on all the volunteers that support us, but there needs to be some sort of oversight. So some for sort of rules, regulations, policies, procedures, so that everyone is playing in the same pool. You know, that we work maybe with our personnel committee to see if there's any fundamental training that everybody in the town who's an employee can get, whether it's communication or something like that, which is going to benefit the town. You know, we look at public safety, which has been kicking around, you know, with Chief Clark in regard to figuring out how to do something to get the houses numbered. So it's not, it could be us working as a board. It could be for the benefit of the town. It could be a combination of both, you know, so I think that we just need to start throwing things at the wall and seeing what sticks and hash them out and, you know, realistically, what's doable and what's not.
OK.
I think because the town doesn't look like it has done a lot of this, I think the first couple might not be as polished or as clean as something if we did it. But I think if we do it anyway, because in some respects, we should be setting Margaret's goals more than her telling us the goals, although we did hire her as our first time administrator. I think the first year or two really is her telling us what she's sort of found, but I think at a certain point, trying to set that the right direction, I think where Peg was going is right, is, you know, I wouldn't limit to what we can do, because even if it's outside the formal scope of select board, between select board and town administrator, we can influence a lot of things in there.
OK. All right.
I'd like to say the board, board's job to create policy, my job to make sure it's implemented at your disposal.
All right. So really, our, our, our goal tonight is to schedule a meeting for this.
There's a reason why I brought my calendar out.
So can we just go over the meetings? All right, so we're not, oops, I'm in September.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing, Peg.
So next week, the 27th, we're off. And Mary, I'm going to need you to like to, you know, nod, shake.
Ask why, why we're off, or was that on our, our calendar that we approved? OK, all right. Just didn't know if there was another reason.
All right, so 27th off. Well, because I know that we usually go every other week in the summer, but, you know, wanted to drag Scott kicking and screaming with us to get him fully, fully involved in selectmen land. All right, so 27th off. So then we go into August. August 3rd is on, correct?
On, yes.
Third, on, and then the next week is a potential retreat. 17th, no 17?
Well, the 17th.
I was wondering about that.
I'm out of, I'm out of state that day, and that's the only reason why the 17th. You did schedule it though, right? It's on the calendar.
But I mean, yes, you did schedule it, but.
The board could certainly meet without me here, but.
Well, do you, is there anything that needs to be done? Would you be handling the warrants in advance and yada, yada, and? Do we need to probably wait a bit and then maybe decide whether we're canceling or not? Yeah?
Yeah.
If I have cell service, I could call into it, too.
Well, again, some prep work is done ahead of time. We can have a shorter meeting that doesn't include potentially a town administrator report, but take care of warrants or anything else that might be necessary.
OK.
So 17th is a maybe, 24th is another date for the retreat, and then the 31st is off?
On.
On? When is Labor Day?
That's a good question.
Probably the what is it?
7th. September 7th.
31st is on, and so that would make the first Monday in September. No, but we meet on the 8th. Right?
Sure.
Scott, I'll just show up. I'll just show up wherever you need us to show up.
You have coffee talk tentatively scheduled, too, for September 14, I believe. No, September 17.
17th, yeah.
Is that right? Yes, I believe that's right.
So what if, I know that the suggestion is for the 10th or the 24th. Do you want to be, I assume you wanted to be there, Margaret?
For the retreat?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, definitely, because the board's, well, because the board's goals and objectives are going to, are going to affect the work I need to do. I'd like to.
Well, the only reason I asked was because we could just do it on the 17th.
Yeah, but Margaret's away.
But if, if you want to be there, then, yeah, but if you wanted to be there, then we wouldn't do that.
And this would be, this would be a meeting solely to conduct the workshop, Goals and Objectives Workshop, right?
Right.
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 OK, so what?
I'm fine with either the 10th or 24th.
I'm fine with either date.
Then how about if I say, how about the 24th, only because the 10th is my son's birthday?
OK.
What do you have to say? Virtual birthday party.
Yeah, well, I mean, we may, we may be getting a visit from the new baby at some point. So.
I had proposed that date only to allow the board a little more time to think about, you know, priorities and objectives you, each of you want to bring and then submit them to me so I can set up the, you know, this, a list for you to all go over.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
OK. All righty. Then.
So if we can just, we just review the date, so 27th off, 3rd on, 10th? No, off.
17th, baby.
Probably no. Yeah, maybe. 24th, yes. 31st, yes. No, 7th, we go on the 8th. And then we'll figure it out the rest in September. OK.
Mary, you're going too fast.
Got to keep up, Chris. Come on. All right, ready? 27th.
Putting down the ones there is no meeting on. So no to the 27th, no to August 10.
And that's it.
Yep, well, maybe, maybe no on the 17th.
17th is a, is a maybe.
Yep.
OK.
Everybody else is a yes.
I'm going to be deep in the woods. But if I have a cell, but if you meet and I have a cell signal, I'll join you.
Right, I think it's likely to be canceled, but you never know if there's a vote that needs to be taken again.
Placeholder, sure.
OK. All right. So for now, we're going to be seeing each other on the 3rd, am I correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Honest to God. Chris is going to show up next week and no one will be here.
It's because I didn't show up at 6:30 tonight.
There's a 50/50 shot, even though we're telling you right now that I'm going to show up next Monday, so, you know.
You know what? Just look for Mary's email. It says reminder, there's a meeting in one day. That's how I do it. So no, Chris, we won't see you on Monday.
No, I will not. You will not. OK. Then I believe it, we're on to, if we've agreed on the 24th, we're on to board questions and comments.
I got squatted. It's too hot.
I don't.
Got anything?
I'm still too overwhelmed to have questions.
OK.
I'm going to try to get my HR paperwork done tomorrow, so, you know, we'll get the basics taken care of.
All right. Well, then I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting and see you in a couple of weeks.
I will second.
OK.
Thank you all.